Please stand to the public's release.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by its citizens, their interests, and its broad.
For Medina Roque. First District Councilwoman, Monica Gonzalez.
Here.
Third District Councilwoman, Terrence Hill. Fourth District Councilwoman, Stacy Winfield.
Present.
Fifth District Councilwoman, Robert Garcia. Sixth District Councilwoman, Gilda Orange. Councilman-at-Large, Duane Braxford. Councilwoman-at-Large, Vanessa Hernandez Forme.
President.
Councilman-at-Large, Kenneth Monroe.
Here.
That's the President, Lenny Francis.
President.
I have a motion to accept the minutes for the regular scheduled meeting on September tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Some more. Motion was made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilwoman Winfield. Have any questions on the motion? For Medina Roque. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Orange. Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any communications from the mayor? I do not. Any communications from the apartment heads? We have accounts payable warrants. Zero nine one one two five C C. Zero nine one two two five C C. Zero nine two four two five C C. Zero nine two four two five L A. Zero nine three zero two five C C. So, thank you. Motion was made by Councilwoman Orange, seconded by Councilwoman Monroe. To accept the accounts payable warrants. Do we have any questions on the motion? Mr. Medina Roque. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Payroll warrant biweekly, zero nine one two two five. Payroll warrant miscellaneous, zero nine one nine two five. Some more.
So.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Monroe, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange. To accept the payroll warrants. Do we have any questions on the motion? For Medina Roque please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Orange. Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any committee reports? Councilwoman Hernandez Orange.
I just wanted to mention that we did have a committee meeting set with Bell for our finance committee for this past Monday. I unfortunately was unable to go because I couldn't see from my eye. Um, Councilman Garcia wasn't able to attend and Councilwoman Monroe was also able to attend. So, the plan is to, um, meet again. Uh, I did get some questions from Councilman Garcia that he would like to have answered, uh, prior to our meeting. And you'll submit it to the group, so I forward that over to you, um, this evening or tomorrow.
Could you please forward it to Chief of Staff also because I'm going to be going on vacation after Friday.
And then we'll be back to in October. Come on.
Moving on, do we have any board reports? Do we have any board reports? Mr. President, you have two members.
Good evening from the council. I most of all wish well with you and your families this evening. The library floor and its director has been very busy this summer. Um, starting with our summer reading program that was a six-week program. There were forty-nine students that completed two thousand four hundred and eighty-one minutes of reading. There was also fourteen adults that completed reading a hundred and twenty books this summer. At the conclusion of the program, we did have a program and a traveling trophy was created. This year, Washington Elementary did receive the trophy. I am also here this evening to personally invite you to the library's visa as so. For the festival that will be tomorrow afternoon from four to seven. We will start off with a tribute to Mr. Michael Gonzalez who worked, Gomez, I'm sorry, who worked as our library photographer. Um, the festival will be tomorrow at the main library. As your invitations, we made sure that we put invitations in each one of your boxes here. Um, it will be a fun-filled evening with cultural workshops, games, food, shopping, and live entertainment. So, please stop by, bring your family, bring your friends, bring your neighbors. The staff has worked very, very hard on this program and this event, and I'm sure you will not be disappointed. So, please come out and see us tomorrow from four to eight at the main library. Thank you.
Thank you. What, Medina, do we have any warrants on first reading? We have two first ordinance. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one three. Chicago Civil City Ordinance for Appropriations and Tax Rates in the year twenty twenty-six. Do we have a motion? Motion made by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange, seconded by Councilwoman Orange. The ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one three. Councilwoman, is that on first or second reading?
First.
On first reading. Any questions on the motion? Councilwoman Orange.
Well, Belle, can you just explain a little bit, um, about this? It's our sole budget, uh, two million dollar budget. I know there's a lot of information there, so I'm going to pass off, but we have an internal leak into the attorney's office. It brings down the comparison of twenty-five to twenty-six.
Okay.
By department, and it's kind of a little bit of a read. Uh, the administration this year, because of what's going around in Washington.
Excuse me, Belle, can you just give it to the clerk because he can't hear what you're saying. He's got a report of what you're saying.
So, this year, because of what's happening in Washington and what's happening in the state, uh, as you're aware, you've probably heard the news that the governor has passed some years, some bills that are going to severely affect us. In twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that's going to be the hardest time. But in twenty-six, there's other things that are going to happen. Uh, right now, our federal grants, they're being held up by Washington. I know an engineer, we have five bands holding over nuggets so far, but only two hundred percent thousand. The rest are being held up. We're getting emails from every department in Washington saying everything's being reviewed. So, we don't know what the funding is going to be. So, we're going to be cautious, even though in twenty-six, it's not, it is five days until start to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But in twenty-six, we're starting to be cautious. That's why the administration is asking. As the city departments submit the same budget, uh, if it's submitted in twenty-five. But some minor changes, NIPSCO's gone up twenty-six point seven percent. Uh, that was in, it says post-tripping on base. So, we've increased, uh, you'll see on this chart, like for example, you'll see the Big and Square Nations at the end of the last column. You'll see there's like in control of this, I mean, this one billion dollar increase from last year. That's where, because that account pays for NIPSCO. Uh, there's also twenty-seven pay periods as opposed to usually twenty-six in twenty-six. So, that's when you see minor pieces. But for the most part, it's going to be the same. But if you look at the revenue, it's going to be down. If you look at Riverboat, uh, it's down four million from last year that we're getting. So, we're already getting, we're already getting some effects already. So, we're going to try to be cautious as we're recommending that we try to build our reserves for next year. But that's the main message I have in the administration, that we're trying to be cautious next year. And we're going to see what happens during twenty-seven, twenty-eight. It'll get pretty severe because what the governor did, he gave, he's favored industry. He's cutting the taxes for industry. In the East Chicago, it's seventy percent of our property tax for industry. So, it's going to affect us more than most of the others.
Any other questions? Roll call please. Thank you. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Orange. Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Next ordinance on first reading, ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one four. Bouncer Mayor Anthony Colwell. Ordnance pending ordinance number two seven five two. And Chapter one fifty-six of East Chicago Municipal Code zoning ordinance. Rebuilding our other ordinances in conflict there with by amending section one five six point zero seven seven special uses. By adding section twenty-seven scrap yards. Some more.
There.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilwoman Orange. The ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one four, is that on first reading?
This Councilwoman.
Just Councilwoman Orange. Uh, on first reading?
Yes.
Any questions on the motion? Councilwoman Orange.
Can you explain this? Yes, directly, new council, uh, the interim city planner, or East Chicago. Basically, what this does is, a lot of you probably live in neighborhoods where there's industrial surrounding your neighborhood, right? And so, back in the day, when they distributed seventy percent, seventy-five percent of the landmass here in Chicago, it made sense at the time. But, um, a perfect example is, um, North Side, for example, forty-five hundred Homer League. There was a industrial site there that now has a light manufacturing site, and it's in the middle of a neighborhood of Homer League, North, uh, WAG, all that good stuff. And so, what's happening is, we want to make sure that we're keeping the neighborhoods as, um, aesthetically and, and the use as much as we can. We know that it can affect where land uses currently right now because it's already previously zoned. But that's a perfect example of where there is an M-two, which is heavy industrial right next to a neighborhood. And so, what this ordinance does is that it stops allowing scrap yards, in this example, a scrap yard from opening up in that neighborhood. Or another example is Block Stadium, where Block Stadium is in Prairie Crossing. There's industrial right next to it, and so that would prevent a scrap yard from opening up in that area. It would not completely remove the ability, it just takes it through a, the B Z A process, which is the Board of Zoning Appeals, to make it a little more cumbersome, a little more tedious to be able to do it, because a lot of neighborhoods are affected with this very problem. Um, so it would join a couple of other, um, uses that would, and that's a special use, and would have to go through this specific process to even be approved. And it would remove the idea that you can just open up a scrap yard and use the industrial corridors just because. And because it is a lot of current right now, this ordinance would serve as a deterrent for that, because we feel it does not fit now the area.
Any other question? Councilwoman Hernandez Orange.
So, it's specifically towards scrap yards, but does that include any, so I know one of the issues that's been continuously happening is the, uh, like the issue with the church having something in the back. Is that considered scrap yard for you guys? So.
No, this would be specific for like metal recycling scrap yards.
Okay.
So, like if they're recycling cars, if they're recycling aluminum, brass, things like that, they're the actual processing of these materials and recycling it. That's what this work is about.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Orange.
Can you stay for a little bit, just because during this, I want to ask you the questions about this containers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Orange. Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
What, Medina, warrants is on second reading? We have one ordinance on second reading. The ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one two. East Chicago Sanitary Ordinance for Appropriation Tax Rate Year Twenty Twenty-Six. Ryan Wolke.
Some more. Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Orange, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange. The ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one two on second reading. Have any questions on the motion? Roll call please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any warrants on third reading? We do not. Are there any resolutions? We don't have any. Moving on, do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Councilwoman Winfield.
I am the interested engineer, Tom, assuming you were supposed to follow what you just said.
So, any thoughts about your minds, city engineer here in East Chicago? So, if you have any questions, just. Councilwoman Winfield, you're here.
Thank you for coming. I have a question. I have a concern, I called your office, uh, in August about, we wasn't in position yet, about lighting in sunny side communities. I called again September eighth, I believe, that had assistance to your sessions, uh, to forward to you. I also emailed the chief of staff, the same list of address. My concern is, I don't know what's going on with NIPSCO everywhere, but I see them everywhere, but it's a concern. I live in a community where there's a lot of seniors. We have two blocks and a half with no lights. No lights, and I have to go on social media and ask the residents to turn the porch lights on due to safety. Because this is, this is the time of the season when it gets busy. And my concern is, it's been over a month to, and NIPSCO doesn't reply. There is a light on butternut that actually is a city. It was one of the ornamental lights that was actually put up. So, I know that doesn't go through NIPSCO. I gave you this, I took the phone numbers, the addresses, and put them down. I haven't gotten a reply. I actually emailed the chief of staff today because I hadn't personally have met you, but when I introduced to you, that's why I asked you to come today. Uh, I don't know what kind of relationship you have established with NIPSCO. I know sunny side, far, there with Councilwoman Orange talked about lights being out over there. I'm trying to see what's going on towards NIPSCO, that's one thing.
So, the answer for your first question, the NIPSCO, you cannot handle the NIPSCO, the other staff. But we, our job, uh, an engineering department with the NIPSCO, we just have to report what the citizen told us about the lighting. Sometime, we have to inspect, like I go there, take the NIPSCO, like the NIPSCO number, case number, so. So, that's all I can do with the language. But for the city lights, we have two companies, we just report these two companies. So, I tell them, like, they take like one week to two weeks for the city light. But for the NIPSCO, we cannot handle this. Just we, our purpose, just to report to them and follow up with their homes.
Well, there has always been a report with the city engineer and NIPSCO, I don't know what disconnect is. I did your job, I looked at every hole and got the numbers off the holes and sent those along with the addresses for them to return. And if we need to do some type of letter or some type of news release about NIPSCO, because where we live is important. Everyone's safety is important. And for them to ignore us for two months, one or three months is, I have problems with it. It's ridiculous, and it's all over, it's not just front area, but I'm just sorry. Because I have tracked it every day, every time. I know the engineer, we used to have a person that go out at night and then ride the city and check, it was a young lady, because I was kind of skeptical when I seen her doing it because she was by herself checking the areas to see what the wrong areas were. But I haven't seen anybody out checking since I called. Because the residents, believe me, are looking to the body to learn them about it. You see someone, let me know. But I'm not on patrol law, but that's the concern. That's my one first concern. My second concern is the project that you have on butternut, hundred forty percent of butternut and everything like, they already put up a wall. Uh, I haven't seen.
It's a wall.
Right, well, that wall was never there, it was there from growing up, I understand, it used to be a fence. It used to be a fence there before. I grew up in the neighborhood over forty years. I'm the council person in the area and the precinct person. And I wasn't made aware of this wall, going, a wall going up that's going to continue like what's on Columbus Drive. The resident that lives right next door to where you're putting that wall up, my concern is, at the edge of that driveway, your wall is going to hit his vehicle when he opens his door to his vehicle. It's not nothing to lack about, because I've been living there over forty years, okay? A fence was there, not a wall. And I understand the noise barrier, that's nice. The residents are concerned, because the residents don't know about a wall that's current, but no one said anything out to those residents. So, they're concerned too. But my concern is how close it is. I, I, I wrote back, said it's normal, because the gentleman was working. And I looked for myself. So, I had, we could talk after, we need concern, yeah, I appreciate it.
But to answer the one question, there are no way to beat, uh, when you open your car or the resident to open their, your car to hit the wall, but it's far away.
At the end of the driveway, yes, it is. So, we could talk after.
Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I just had one thing, and, um, I had talked to our former engineer, and I just want to put it on your radar, and I'll go ahead and follow up with the, with the email tomorrow because I'm not sure if it's progressing enough. On one hundred and forty-fifth, uh, turning or going north, right by the B B, uh, gas station, going towards Harrison, we have a lot of, uh, traffic, truck traffic, and I know I talked to the former engineer about putting an old truck rest. And I know it's a lot of, um, uh, semi-truck trailers going through that neighborhood, going to FedEx area and into one hundred and forty-fifth, or just trying to go to the Walmart, uh, distribution center and taking a shortcut. So, that's something that, um, I just wanted to bring up today, but again, I'll follow up with the email because it's, it's, like, truck shouldn't be pointing in the direction of that. And then there's some, there's a resident here too to talk about, more about truck traffic, and I'm sure you're feel that, um, during public expression, so thank you. Thank you. Oh, I was going to follow up with, uh, Councilwoman Winfield for saying about the door. So, it's not going to be along the sidewalk line? Because that's where, if you were going to put this, that's where it should be, not, not, uh, or where, in, in, where somebody even got to cut the grass on that side of it, because the city, the council's up. And so, I, I don't understand why there wouldn't be, right yet next to the sidewalk.
I believe that was something that you guys have been discussing. Any other question?
Are we nervous? Because you keep wrecking.
Any final?
Exactly, I was done here.
None other than finally, any effect need to wreck? None of them, fine. Any other new business?
Okay. Sorry.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So, there's two things. The first one is, um, I talked to somebody, uh, from the United Way on Saturday, and they want to, uh, come to the council meeting sometime this month or next, I'm sorry, next month, and talk about a program that's an eighteen-month program that can help individuals, um, with work, childcare, and things of that nature. And he said it would take around ten minutes, so I'm going to let you know in advance that when they do come, it's going to be about a ten-minute presentation. But it's information that we really need to get out to our, our citizens and our, and our residents. The other thing is, I just want to remind everybody that this Sunday, here at Veterans Park, at two P M., we are going to have mariachis in the park in honor of Hispanic Heritage Fund. So, please bring your lawn chairs, um, come on around and just enjoy some music before the Bears game.
Any other new business? Moving on from public expression.
Yeah.
If you have something else, I'll, if I could come to the front.
Um, my question is, I, I was sent a email, uh, and also I put the letter, asking me to sponsor the ordinance for a best interest, uh, about the shipping containers. And it was about the church and also the shrine. So, I, as you know, I, I came to the B Z A meeting. Uh, I went to the church to see where it was, because, um, they didn't have an ISO, it was fenced in. And you told me that you're going to start on all of the shipping containers. But my concern is, and I was talking to our attorney, is I was sent, and once I said I wouldn't do it, then you guys went back to do another code that would allow the B Z A to, uh, circumvent the, uh, council. So, I, I'm trying to figure out why that was, and if you guys are deciding these people, where is the code that they couldn't have these shipping containers?
Okay. So, the, I guess I'll address the first thing. So, the, when the original B Z A went through, the citation of the code was that it would be a special use. Um, and the code reads that it's parking of vehicles of outside. So, par- parking of, of vehicles outside is not what that is. So, I then clarified, I did not do that sending of the letter or anything like that, because I was not the interim city planner at the time. Um, and so, when I found out that that was the wrong code to have been used, so it still needed to go through the B Z A, it just, that was not the code to have used to bring it to the B Z A. And when I realized the error, I sent out a, you know, since I have staff meetings now with, with the private department, mentioned, send out an email and a letter rectifying that this is not what the case is. I also went to the B Z A to rectify that problem and moving forward, said this is the code that it was to be used. The code is very explicit in terms of where these storage containers, so that's what we're talking about here, storage containers. Um, a storage container for a commercial property or a residential property is a garage or a garage substitute, not a storage container. And so, the only places where storage containers are allowed permissible by the code is in industrial sites. So, that's why that has to be taken through the B Z A. And so, as a, so what I did is say, okay, well, we don't necessarily have a code to govern this at this point, because it's explicit that it's only at industrial corridors where you can have these, um, storage containers. This is very pervasive everywhere. It's happening at hospitals, it's happening at churches, it's happening even at people's residencies where they have these storage containers. And so, now, we're getting, we're, we're getting to the point where it, it's becoming ISOs, they're becoming, um, not what needs to be in these zones. And so therefore, we're taking them all through the BZA. Now, when I got involved recently, these have been going through the court systems already for two to three years already. The court is finally, the reason why not, we're involved is the court is saying, is, is diverting the verdict to the city to say, what do we do with this? Because they keep going through the court system, we keep, you know, extending the timeframe on, on the thing, but no, there's no formal resolution. So then that's when I said, okay, I can give you a formal resolution by taking the BZA process. And whether they get the variance or not, that would set precedent on whatever they need to do with courts when any of these show up. As I mentioned to you that day, we have no code that governs this. So if we are going to permit it, we need to create a code and codify it. That way it allows, okay, if you're going to have a storage container and it's a C container, for example, that's what we would allow. In this case, for example, the shrine, the original containers that went to the court was a trailer, it was a semi-trailer with wheels and falling apart until they finally got, you know, sided. And then they took the trailer, but then left the other one with no wheels on the floor. Um, and so again, it goes back to, it's not that storage is not allowed in these districts, it's the type of storage facility that's being used as such. And so what's happening now is people instead of building a garage or an extension to the building to do storage, they're, they're taking the easy way out, and the simple, easy way out is to get a storage container, flop it up in the land, and say, okay, well, this is the cheapest alternative that they can have. That's not what's permissible. And so now it's becoming a situation where, oh, well, this person got this, so let me put it, or let me put that. And so that's what we're trying to control now. And so to answer your question on why the change happened is because the people in the planning department, until I got there, did not understand the code. And so I had to clarify on why these things need to go through the board, and why they have not even been going to the board, the citation, the proper citation to, to take them to this BZA board.
So you said they can have uh, the industrial sites?
Yes, so it is explicitly permitted in industrial sites, and actually in industrial sites, you can only have two storage containers. So it's very explicit, it states how many. Some of these industrial sites have ten, they have fifteen, they're stacked up, I mean, so we're, we're, we're common.
Can you send the codes that you have to our town?
Yeah.
I'm just like, because I was driving through my district, and I have, I don't know, a piece of, that's seen it over on Wythe Hope. There's a storage container right in some, in somebody's house, I thought, okay, well, maybe they're moving, or maybe they're doing something, and, and it's still there. Have you seen them?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and that was just a comment, I, I, there, and I see what you're saying, because people are using them as tiny homes and, and stuff like that, but it's the easy way out, and it's just, it's an ISO for the community in the residential area.
Thank you. Moving on, public question? They have calls. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and refrain from abusive language to the audience, council members, and community. First, we have Mr. John McCovey.
Uh, good evening, council. I'm here, uh, I live at forty-one nineteen Barron's. Uh, I'm here for a traffic problem. With the one lane on Indianapolis Boulevard going north and south, I've had gasoline tanker trucks come down Berry Avenue, which is a one toward the south. They're trying to avoid the congestion of Indianapolis Boulevard. From Columbus Drive to a hundred fifty-first on Indianapolis Boulevard, there's approximately nine traffic signals. Plus a railroad uh, interruption there. I'm suggesting that they make the original truck route, do signage at the intersection on Columbus and Indianapolis Boulevard. To have the trucks headed south to, you know, Asia on Columbus Drive to Railroad. Railroad south back to Indianapolis Boulevard where it continues to be two lanes in each direction, or there would be no congestion. From Railroad Avenue to uh, a hundred fifty-first uh, on Railroad, there's approximately four, only four traffic signals. And no railroad, because there's an overpass. So it's much, it's maybe a little farther for a truck, but it's probably a lot faster. Uh, I mean, it's all a matter of signage. I think the original truck route was uh, Columbus Drive east to Railroad. But you see many of trucks, and the length of the truck, if you get a railroad stoppage or interruption from traffic lights, you'll have traffic from one intersection to the other. You know, like from a hundred forty-second to a hundred forty-third. And by the time that semi starts up again, to get back to the speed, it, it's just a whole back, if you get a, if you get a train, that's another problem. So I think it's a matter of signage, and another thing to put signage, no true traffic on uh, headed east on Columbus Drive, off the intersection of Columbus and Indianapolis. Uh, it's a matter of signage, but I think it's an important thing. Like I said, we had gasoline tanker trucks, you have inter- uh, infrastructure under, under street, water and sewer, which keeps heavy trucks going out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colan.
Next, we have Mr. Jean Morgan.
Number one. Name's Eugene Morgan, I'm a resident at twenty-six eighty Green Line, lifelong East Chicago resident. Um, I was recently notified by a neighbor, actually, when he had seen uh, some city workers, excuse my voice, I have lung condition, affects my voice sometimes now. Um, so I was notified by a neighbor that they would be doing a project, uh, the wall on home side Butterlet, which the property, the exact address is forty-one eighteen Hill Street. So it coincides exactly with the wall that uh, this Winfield brought up. Uh, it was, it was constructed on Columbus Drive around two thousand nineteen. When that wall originally was about to go, Mayor Copeland and Milton Reed came in and bumped my door and asked me, they rang my door, come ask me if I would be interested in having that wall on the long side of my property, because I was, you know, thinking about taking my fence down and uh, expand, hopefully expand my property. So I said, yeah, that'd be great, I said, as long as it doesn't encroach affecting the engineer at the time, let me know, know you'll be gangland. So Copeland told me, you'll be gangland, I want this to go back, show me where, and come over, and you know, a little bit, whatever, so. After they got everybody to construct the wall, their plans changed. And one of the contractors let me know that these are not the plans we signed off on. Your wall was supposed to be in this footprint, it was changed. Adjustments were made on the other side, when you entered Sunny Side, on the property where Milton Reed lived and some of his neighbors. So they gained some of the fifteen, twenty feet, or whatever. But then me, the crunch was made on my side. That's not what I wanted originally, you know, so fast forward to now. They let me know that recently, hey, the city was on the side of your house, they said about to resume and put that wall up next to your home, right? So my thing, I said, I haven't heard anything. He said, yeah, they were out here, I wasn't notified, nobody said nothing, you know, whatever, so. About a week or so, two weeks later, I saw engineer uh, get out, you know, I can add more utilities, thirty seconds or, oh, I, I really need much more, so. Uh, I let him know, I hadn't been notified, nobody let me know, he said, the mayor pointed the wall to be erect. Uh, nobody let me know nothing, nobody gave me notice to move any vehicles, I didn't know when it was going to start. Uh, and basically, I had been trying to buy that property, I've been taking care of that property since twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. Other family been taking care of it since twenty-twelve. I had been trying to purchase it, I have the information here. But the city ended up purchasing. I had let Milton Reed know back then that I was trying to get that property so I could extend my funding. And
Two times, I'll speak after the game.
Excuse me, I'm the next person, can he have my minutes?
More than you have three minutes.
I'm speaking of, I'm speaking of, at the time of the Lake Shore redevelopment project, the Columbus Drive project, I was on the redevelopment board. They continued the fence to uh, one part of the opening of the code is that. After a while, it stopped because the ch- the space had changed. We had several change orders for that second half. Okay, um, we would like to also visit redevelopment and ask them to uh, look at the specs again. Because they changed several times while we were on the board, and they couldn't come to an agreement. So now that the city, when, when he told Milton Reed he was going to purchase, that he was looking in to purchase, the city hurried up and purchased, so they could be what they wanted to. But they are actually over the line and on this property. And it's no way a fence can go up at the end of your driveway. If my brother opens up his door, he's going to hit the fence. Uh, where they had put the, the markings at first, they came back and they moved. So we are asking that this project not go on until it's looked at again in redevelopment, because there was some unclear things that happened. And they stopped the project, and they, they started again without no plan. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Prestima of the Terrace.
Well, my name's Christine Guitares. I'm the owner of forty-four oh five Indianapolis Boulevard. Um, I'm not currently running a business there, I'm fixing it to sell. Only some things occurred this year that put me, put me back to not to not continuing on what I've been doing, but I'm going to get back to it, um. I'm not running a business, working on my own cars, cleaning up, et cetera, um. My sign is out there, I did some work on it. The, the signage fell due to some wind and it's inside the shop. Um, they told me that I need to take it down. I feel I pay insurance on it, I felt as though my, part of my property, it's a structure, I pay insurance on it and everything. And I wanted to put for sale by owner as soon as I finished the different cosmetic stuff inside, I'm about sixty percent done. Um, I was just wondering if I need to, if I could put up, like I could utilize it as a first sale by owner on each side, uh, you know, I just, they're telling me that I need to take it down, and I don't know. I'm not really sure on the current codes on how all that works, so I'm here, I just wanted to bring your attention and see what I, see what I can do about it.
Thank you, someone will discuss with you after.
Thank you.
Have a motion to adjourn, please?
Someone? Thank you.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilwoman Winfield. Roll call please. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Orange? Hernandez, orange?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Franciscan?
Yes.
Good night.